Raise all sorts of. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to those of you joining us both physically and remotely tonight to this Monday, January eighth study session agenda for the Lakewood City Council. So we have several items for discussion tonight, including apparently volume on the microphones, which is quite high. The first is going to be a review of the 2024 Citizens Advisory Board Committee and Commission work plans. And we are fortunate tonight to have Michael Vargas, our assistant at the city manager, to help walk through the CABC work plans with us. All of these do appear on our council agenda packet. And so, Mr. Vargas, if you want to walk us through, we can have a robust discussion.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Michael Vargas here to review the various work plans of all of your advisory committees. I know the city council has been involved in various joint meetings with all of your advisory committees throughout the year, really to address important topics in this year. So these work plans should reflect those joint meeting discussions. So starting off with a short and sweet one, let's look at the American Lake Lake Management Advisory Committee. This work plan should look fairly familiar as this committee is all about addressing the invasive aquatic vegetation that may pop up at American Lake, and they're very much still engaged in that work this year. So it should be a fairly similar work plan to previous years. Moving on to the Arts Commission.
And just a quick point of order here, Mr. Vargas. So as we work through these, there probably won't be much discussion and questions, but I want to give at least a pause at the end of each work plan and see if there is any sort of questions or discussion.
Yeah.
So as to the first one, does anybody have any questions or discussion on the direction? Seeing none, go ahead. Let's go to the next one.
Yeah. So moving on to the Arts Commission. Arts Commission is all about promulgating and promoting the arts around the city. It does so through its two subcommittees here. First one being the Public Arts Subcommittee, and they are still continuing their utility box wraps program, as well as the murals, putting on visual arts and special events, and also rotating art around the city. And the Performing Arts Committee is still putting on various performances at all of the city events that we put on to include the Fiesta de la Familia and the streets festivals at the newly named Colonial Plaza. And we have various milestones included in the topic table below there.
Very good. Mr. Branstad, I see you poised to ask a question.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It notes that the commission has two committees, one for public art and one for performing arts. And the public art includes utility box wraps, murals, special events, and rotating art. And further on down in the discussion, it talks about rotating art that the target element of rotating art for this year is a sculpture. And what I, two things that I expected to see on this work plan this year as we're getting ready to approve their recommended public art program here in another two meetings is beginning some planning regarding whatever the next possibly in the next biennium of a significant permanent piece of public art. You know, we've heard from the community that the they started to see the new traffic circles as a possible locations that the the public art policy, the draft is similar to what we're going to see as what we're supposed to prove for final and you know, indicates that there's, that there'd be a process that involves with that. And I would expect either as a committee of the whole, the commission, or at least the Public Art Committee be spending some effort to begin to identify both location and then process to solicit amongst artists opportunities to do that that would align kind of with what I thought the draft of the public art policy was going to have in it to be able to go and do that. And if, if those could be inserted in some way, perhaps they don't have to be real definitively, but at least indicates that they're going to work on them and maybe when they might begin to have their discussions in the calendar, that would be, I'd like, I think that would be good to have in the final work plan for this year. If only so that they don't think that we've lost interest in it to do that. And then I just didn't know whether the omission of the discussion about the work around art within the Nisqually's in Fort Silicon Park is not in this work plan because we, but it's neither is it in the Parks and Recreation Board work plan. And I would think one of those two groups would be doing that and well, you know, maybe you don't need too many cooks on that, but there ought to be some sort of civilian group working and looking at those plans to give a community blessing to them. And then those, those, those are my comments if they could be just tweaked before we have to make a final approval to put something in there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bill, you had comments on that?
Yeah, thank you. I think those are great comments, Councilmember Branstad. I think that under the 2024 work plan, there's, they're kind of generic as far as like mural installations, so that could entail something working with the Nisqually tribe. Like it, I think it's open a little bit more. So I think that those are in there, but calling them out specifically, I think is great. But I do know I attended the Arts Commission meeting tonight and they were talking about different, actually, they were working on some signal box questions. But I know that those are always in there. I know that they have also been talking about with the rotating artists or the sculpture that is rotating, things like that. Those are areas where we can look at to incorporate, say, like if you say Nisqually are opening it up to more artists in the area too. Cause I know they're working also on their artist kind of vendor list. I don't know what to call it specifically, but just of people that we can refer to who artists have been vetted before and that we could throw out, give like an RFQ to or, you know, proposals. So I think those are all really great points, but I do believe that Arts Commission does have that in their thoughts. So reiterating it to them would be great.
Understood. And to that point, we'll see a little later on that addressing the Nisqually Partnership Project at Fort Silicon Park is under the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So we could potentially have two advisory committees working on this project, one from the arts perspective, another from a more parks perspective, so.
I think in response to Mr. Branstad's question, I think on item eight of the 2024 work plan, it could read, you know, the recommend one sculpture for the rotating art, which is arguably a smaller scale piece for the city hall per public art plan and coordination for the RFP process for the next larger public art piece consistent with the public art policy to be adopted by council or something to that effect. I think that's correct. I think it's timely for them to start working on the next process.
Yes. And are you sure you don't want to include the next water feature?
Yeah, we can. That'll be public, that'll be the Parks and Rec for sure. Yeah, lighting and water go together, fire, yeah, exactly. Especially if there's a short line, it's fire and water. Exactly. All right. I think we've got that. Thank you. Next.
All right. Next up, we have the Community Services Advisory Board work plan. Should look fairly familiar, although with one really important item that's been brought up through the joint meeting discussions. And that would be how to really incorporate the opioid settlement funds into our human services system here in the city. That is one item that the CSAT will be working on to incorporate this year as we do have a better lay of the land and now a sort of better idea of that. We will be getting opioid settlement funding for foreseeable future. And there is a youth council element here as well, which is also included in the youth council work plan that we will review as well, so.
You've got that on item six already, right? Well, it says 2023 work plan, so we should probably make sure we include the work on opioid funds in 24, right?
Oh, yep.
Shouldn't that say 2024?
Four in the.
Yeah, okay. So work on the opioid fund distribution recommendations already included there, provided it's 2024. Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, in regards to that opioid thing that we've asked them to look at and make a recommendation, it may be beneficial to tell them when in the year we want to receive that recommendation. You know, we may want to like put that on, you know, you know, it's looking ahead as to, as to our timelines for wanting to, to move on that or deciding that if it's going to be a part of the 2025 community services application process to incorporate some monies in there for them to solicit. And so it would be a plus up to the 1%. But, but at least putting something in the yearly calendar about when we'd like them to have a recommendation as opposed to stretching it out to the very end when we're well, well into the next biennial budget into which we would probably want to incorporate any opioid anticipated revenue to do that. So I just give them some some sort of a deadline on that, other than just leaving it open sometime during the year.
No, it's a fair point. I see in October that the joint session with city council is slated for that, and they are then to present the 2025 human services funding recommendations. So there's kind of a drop deadline there. One would think that if they're going to incorporate youth council input, that it would have to be done prior to May or June. Otherwise, youth council tends to evaporate after June, right, when some graduate. So. I think it's there in terms of a timeline. If you want to move something up, I guess you can at least discuss it. But it, that would impact their significant outline of how they go about reviewing the application materials and making the recommendations. I think it's there for October to present to us, so it gives them plenty of feedback time.
Yeah, yeah. I was really thinking that, that perhaps in, 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 in May, when they are creating application materials and a rating scheme is that if they're going to roll in an opioid element into, into that. And historically, they have come to us earlier in the year with changes to the application process, which is different than bringing to us the, the final results of their application process. You know, and I, I think May is perhaps the latest that we'd want to do that. And, and the whole idea of that is that then it allows us to look at what they see as the need and what they want to do, and then to give them time to incorporate it into their October recommendations about how money should be allocated or spent.
Maybe that's part of the March 20 review of the Human Services Funding Priorities. We typically have had a county council, correction, city council and Human Services Advisory Board meeting to discuss the funding priorities before they launch into it. I don't know if that was the anticipation for that timeframe, if that's a study session or not. But it's worth looking at because the funding priorities may change based on what the council sees as important.
And also on that note, I believe staff is, as they conduct their monthly community collaboration meeting with various providers, human services providers, that we are now incorporating discussions about opioid funding and how to address that in the community. So that's already happened.
That is being done?
Yes, corrected. This upcoming one, this month, actually. So it is pretty timely to have something in that a quarter to timeframe, yep.
Okay. I think we're good with that.
So.
We don't want to drug out, so to speak, right?
Correct. So is the council a direction to perhaps have an opioid funding recommendation, perhaps approach, perhaps at the 320?
Well, I think it's part of the, the review of the funding priorities. I mean, certainly we've got this money. It's a priority of the council. They've already, you know, council's already articulated that we want to have control over our own money. And we want to rely on the Human Services Subcommittee to kind of cull those recommendations from community collaborations and then come to us with a funding recommendation for that 80 some odd thousand, whatever it's going to be. So I think it's implicit, but it's worth noting so that when you go through the community collaboration process with them, I think you're there, right, at those meetings typically? Unless I'm missing something, that's the direction, right, we want to take?
What, what is our strategy? I mean, so the youth council's involved.
To provide some input, right?
This now collaboration group isn't, so now you've got three groups, and I get it, but do you expect that to be March 20th?
Well, I don't expect their outcome to be March 20th. I think we expect them to understand what our priorities for funding would be by March 20th. And I think if we have a change from what has typically been the funding priorities for human services, that would be the time to articulate. We usually have had a early study session with that committee to say, hey, let, you know, what are you receiving? What are you going to go out, go about in terms of collecting information and information from the community collaboration group? And oh, by the way, we've got this new funding source with the opioid settlement. There's, and they know this, right, that they're about 80 grand. It's an annual payment, isn't it, for the next 19 years or 20 years, something like?
Well, it depends on who's giving it.
Oh, that's right. You're on the. Yeah, exactly. You're on that task force, right, Councilor? Okay. Goes up? Okay. Okay. So however, we need to articulate that, whether we bring them together in a study session or we power it down through you, I think we want to make sure that we maximize the utility of the monies. Mr. Branstad, and, and let me say one thing. We are getting inquiry from the county as to why Lakewood may want to go on its own as opposed to having a more regional approach and collaboration toward the issue. So it would be helpful to know from their perspective as they go to these community collaboration meetings, does it make sense for us to fund directly, you know, those providers in Lakewood that are doing good things in Lakewood as opposed to working on a regional approach? We think it's better to have Lakewood money in Lakewood. Time will tell. Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I think we're going to be pestered by the county opioid folks who think that everything should be at the county to do that. And so to the extent that we can distill that three-page list of things that you could use the money for that is in that huge thing down to what things on that list would really be impactful to invest in in Lakewood so that we can consistently communicate to the county that we're going to, we're, we're doing and we've identified what really Lakewood needs in this big realm to do that. And that this is the group, while we're asking them to talk with other groups and coordinate, this is the group we're asking to distill into a recommendation to us that we can then use to give them some direction for, for an actual application process.
Agreed. Anything else? Mr. Laura Sella?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So different municipalities in the county are taking different approaches to this right now. A number of them are contributing to a larger pool at the county level because they think they can be more effective. I agree with council's direction to use our Community Services Advisory Board to make their recommendations for how we want to proceed. And it may be that we want to go a route where we're rolling with the rest of the county, but for now, let's find out what's best for Lakewood from our Lakewood folks and go from there.
Sounds good. Anything else before moving on to the next CABC?
Well, I think that's it.
All right. Landmarks.
Yes, the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board, L-HAB here. Some things to note here, we are, we do have three vacancies on the advisory board. We're starting off 2024, and it is being worked on to fill those. We also have two vacancies in relation to the staff support roles there, Development Services Manager and Associate Planner. However, we do have interim staff in those positions as we work to, to fill those permanently in 2024. So we are squared away there. Some items of note here for L-HAB this year. L-HAB will be working to utilize the recently awarded Pierce County Historic Preservation Grant, how to utilize those funds to place additional historical markers throughout the community. L-HAB will continue to work with the Pretty Gritty Tours Group to develop a walking tour program, continuing to work on that. And finally, a new item, another new item here would be L-HAB working with Lakewood Gardens as they continue to expand and modify their historic assets over there. So that's in addition to all of the various activities that L-HAB does to, you know, preserve and promote history around here in Lakewood.
That's great. Questions, comments before we move on? Very good. Thank you. On to the next.
Yeah. Next up, we have the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board here. Some important items this year include one that's coming up fairly shortly, and that would be hosting the Partnering for Progress Workshop. This is in collaboration with various community stakeholders involved in the youth community here in Lakewood, as well as the youth council representatives, how to best address youth issues here in Lakewood. Lakewood, Lakewood's Promise is taking the lead on that workshop. They will continue to be involved in Youth Summit as well, both planning and implementation this year, as well as reviewing annual initiatives around the city such as the youth, mental health, safe spaces, and genuine adult and peer relationships.
Any questions, comments on that one? Kind of does a good job of operating on its own pretty well. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the liaison to that committee, I just wanted to say that the youth are really involved in showing us what they need from us and how they want to go with the program. So I think it's headed in the right direction.
Good. Okay, lodging tax, which will deserve about 15 seconds because not a whole lot.
Exactly. Another short and sweet work plan here, should look familiar with previous years for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, still committed to their work in distributing those funds. So same exact process, different milestone dates. Yep.
Very good. It's actually, just my comment as the liaison and chair of that meeting, it really is a a very interesting way how we leverage monies for the benefit of the, of the city through tourism and tourism-related activities and facilities. So it's a good use of the funds. And it's amazing, over the 14 years that some of us have been here together, how that pot has grown successfully from about 4, 4.50 a year to like a million, two. And that is a direct outcome of the number of facilities that provide beds in Lakewood, hotels and motels. So it's a good problem to have, and I look forward to seeing how we can best leverage those uses for the benefit of those providers, as well as the folks who come and enjoy the activities in Lakewood. Next, on the Planning Commission.
Yep. Plan and Commission work plan, a little more than 15 seconds here. Variety of items that the Plan and Commission is addressing. Some important ones include continuing the 2024 periodic review of the Comprehensive Plan. An important item in this one would be the short-term rental regulations. So it tends to be a hot topic in the community. And dispersed throughout the, all of these items, periodic review items would be a discussion on on-street parking and how to address that moving forward with not only a comprehensive plan updates, but also how those are informed by the recent state legislation when it comes to middle housing and, and densification. Some other important items include a review of the Urban Forestry Program Implementation Plan. This is sort of the next step as we received a, from the UW Student Consultant Lab, a sort of implementation guide, how to make an urban forestry program happen here in Lakewood. This implementation plan is how to, is from, coming from staff about how to make that a reality here, informed by that guide. So a review of that. Plan and Commission is also looking at the multi-family tax exemption program and how to expand that or best align the residential target areas with current city planning to include the downtown sub-area plan. And also, a new item here would be the Annual Climate Change and Resiliency Report. This will be the first report of its kind since the city council adopted the three-year climate change work plan pretty recently. And this climate change report will really take a comprehensive look at the impacts, I mean, drivers of climate change here in Lakewood to include carbon emissions in, in the community.
I have a question and a request for council to consider. On the multi-family tax exemption, MFTE residential target area update, to me, you know, we've discussed this a little bit. We deferred the adoption of an ordinance in the last quarter in lieu of more process. There is a project that could be a go or no-go within the CBD that could benefit from the MFTE and could provide, I don't know, 28 to 30 units of housing if the MFTE RTA is extended. If not, there won't be those 30 units of housing potentially. You probably don't know, Mr. Vargas, in terms of the time commitment, but I'm of the understanding that the review process for the expansion of the RTA is not significant. And if not significant, not, not that it's not meaningful, I'm just saying in terms of time commitment, it's not necessarily significant. I would ask that we consider moving that up to the first quarter and not leaving it to the third quarter. Unless it upends, and I'm of the impression that it wouldn't upend their work plan significantly. But Ryan or Councilor Pearson, you might know better. But I would like us to consider moving that consideration to the first quarter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I don't think that that would be an issue, moving some things around on there. I was, and, and that makes a lot of sense to, you know, if we can, but to help facilitate something. If I'm changing a schedule around, I'm all for that as well. I look at this, this is a busy work plan. There's a lot of new items that are going to take some, you know, some serious chewing on to get through. And there's been a pretty big turnover at Planning Commission. So I think it'd be helpful to, to, to check in and see how things are going and, and, you know, is this too much? Is this the right amount? And kind of see how things are going as well. And if we need to consider moving something back, then, but certainly not the MFTE if we can help get some housing going here early, so.
Yeah, because it looks like the first three issues in the first quarter, electing their chair and vice chair, which takes all 10 minutes. Review of their work plan, which should take a little bit of time. And the council updating goals might take some time. And then they've got the housing, annual housing action plan. Seems to me that this could fit well within that as part of that analysis in the first quarter. So in the absence of any consternation, do we have a consensus to move that for them to the first quarter?
Yep.
Mr. Coffield? Moving that to the first quarter then? Great. Who has, Mr. Coffield?
Yes, Mayor, we can, we can do that.
Yes, Mayor, we can, we can do that. We have to shuffle around some other things in some other areas outside of the Planning Commission, but we can get that done in first, early second quarter. First quarter.
First quarter. Sounds good.
We're already a month into it.
Very good. Post haste, as they say. Next, Mr. Vargas.
Understood. Moving on. Next, we have another pretty comprehensive work plan, looking at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Some items, some important items to note here, going down the numbered list there. We have the Nisqually Partnership Project at Forest Silicon Park. So we're viewing an update on that since we made pretty significant headway on that project in terms of securing funding, bringing the scope of work and such. The advisory board will be looking at, further looking at street ends, sort of honing in on a further prioritization of street end projects and also providing the council with a sort of pilot site, a recommendation about where to put the very first street end improvement. That will be coming up this year. We also have a, the board will be looking at the Park Sign Project, another project that's made a lot of headway in 2023. Looking at an update to that to include wayfinding signs and reader boards. I think cost estimates for those are coming up, so that'll be a part of the review by the board there. We also have the board being involved with the climate change initiatives around the city, getting updates on those, and also on the Urban Forestry Program, staying involved in that process. And there's, there's a lot of intersection between that and the parks here. The board will also be looking at, as a city makes more progress in the Camp Murray Boat Launch Improvement and sort of folding in Historic Forest Silicon, historic cottages, bringing those into the fold, into the city's park systems. The board will be reviewing those opportunities. And to close out, we also have the review of the completed Edgewater Park Master Plan later in the year. And that will also include a recommendation by the board as to the final sort of site layout that, that they will, they will recommend to city council.
Remind us, Mr. Vargas, we have, didn't we let a contract for additional design services to make that come to fruition, Edgewater Park? I think we did. That's why it's actually perking along in a timely way, right?
I have to get back to you on that. Do not recall.
That's important to us, you know, along with everything else.
Yep.
Any questions on the parks? Particular work plan? Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, number eleven, senior service update, what do you have in mind for that?
Senior Services Update. I have to get back to you on what that update would entail. I'm pretty sure it's a, you know, sort of a review of our senior services program here and how, how that's been going along, especially since the big change since COVID started and, you know, the programming shifts that have occurred. So yeah, I can follow up with a further, further review of that. Yep.
And I am aware that Ms. Dodsworth knows about the opportunities with the Korean Women's Association to provide at least an outlet for senior services, or at least a facility that might provide a unique, different experience. So as you talk to them about that senior services update, it might include collaboration and coordination with K W A on possible services for Lakewood seniors. It'd be worth looking at that because it's been offered.
Got it.
Okay. Mr. Brandstetter, did you have something?
Yes, you know, in their special events list, it lists on June nineteenth, a potential Juneteenth partnership to be determined. That that that's kind of vague considering that done by June nineteenth, Juneteenth will have passed. And I'm wondering, what is envisioned there? And if, if the date, Juneteenth falls on a Wednesday this year, so it's, it's difficult to do that. So this may be the following weekend to be able to go and do that. And it says partnerships, so I don't know what that means. If that is like in last year, there was something, that an event that took place that was really led by a faith-based group that the city supported with to be able to go and do that. But it doesn't seem to be a topic earlier. And I think that, you know, this, this is a holiday that we have adopted as a city to, to, to be able to go and do. I was, I would envision that in that early June timeframe, we would be looking at some sort of a proclamation as to the significance of that day and why we have it as a holiday. But I think if it's going to be particularly a first-time event, that there probably is a date before June that it ought to slide into the topics list.
That sounds good.
Yep. Can come back with further clarification on that item and to include, perhaps including a special call out within the topics list. Yep.
Oh, Mr. Coffield has a point.
Mayor and council on Juneteenth, we're looking at actually two partnering opportunities. The first is with Senator Twina Noble. She actually has an event down at Forest Silicon Park, we understand. And so we're going to be reaching out to her to see if there's an opportunity there. The other is that there's a church that actually last year had an event over at their facility at One Twelfth and Far West. And so we're going to be reaching out to them as well to see if there's an, an opportunity, rather than the city creating its own event, if you will. And I'll just be upfront with you, we just don't have the capacity to be able to do that. So that's why we're looking at a partnership and leveraging existing events that are happening, that people are already going to.
That sounds great. The only asterisks I might put under the special event on page seventeen there is the June, excuse me, July twenty Summerfest event. I think we know here, but we want to make sure that the community knows that's when we're sponsoring our friends from Gim Hay as well, so that week. So that, you know, I'm sure we'll do something special for them at Summerfest as well.
Affirmative, Mayor, and that's within the realm of this body, the city council.
Got it. Okay, great. Take it away, Mr. Vargas, Public Safety Advisory Committee.
Yeah. So for P S A C here, we have some important items they are addressing this year. That includes tackling the issue of the Neighborhood Association Revitalization Plan. P S A C is also looking at getting more out there in the community, if you will. They're looking at having a table at Truck and Tractor Day to really interface more with the community, sort of broadcast their work as a committee and bring more light to the public safety issues around the city and get, get residents more involved there. And to dovetail into that, they're also looking at more community involvement with the state legislature. This item really came about with the, you know, host of public safety reforms at the state level. So P S A C is really looking at how to involve, how to be a better interface, if you will, how to facilitate more conversation between Lakewood residents and our state legislature around those public safety issues and any more new ones that, that, that are coming up in the city, such as our, with our youth as well. So there's some important items there.
Any questions on that? I don't see on the work plan, and maybe it's not necessary to be on the work plan, but last year, I think, or the year before, they had the Citizens Advisory, the Citizens Academy, excuse me. Is that something that we know whether or not is going to happen this year? And if so, whether this committee would have a part of that? Because every time we do that, and I, in my history here, we've done it at least a couple of times, it's really been well thought of and reasonably well attended. So I don't know if that's part of the work plan or not. It's a city piece as opposed to just an advisory committee piece, but they would have a role in play. So if we can find that out, that would be kind of good to know.
Yeah, I could bring that back and give an update on that. Yep.
Okay. Youth Council.
Yeah, closing out the night with the Youth Council, which in my estimate probably has gone through the most change of all the advisory committees. And you can see that in the members list there. It's quite expansive this year. So going off the heels of the recent joint Youth Council and City Council meeting for the 2024 Work Plan, a big item for the Youth Council will be being involved in the opioid settlement funds process, really providing that youth perspective in terms of the intersection between the opioid crisis and youth issues that, that are here in Lakewood. So Youth Council will be involved with that, and that's including, you know, more collaboration with, with C S A B as well. Because of the expansive members list this year, Youth Council is looking into breaking out into subcommittees throughout the year to work on, give special attention to various topics that are important to the youth and convening as a larger group as well throughout the year. Youth Council will, of course, be at the Partnering for Progress Workshop hosted or lead by Lakewood Promise, Lakewood's Promise. In addition, of course, Youth Council will be hosting and preparing for their Youth Summit as well.
And we received a reasonable update from our Youth Council members last Monday, so that's helpful. Any particular questions of council on this? Very good. I think that we're good to go, although Councilmember Laura Sella and I should be working on a day in the life of both mayor and council member with our two Youth Council Chair and Vice Chair. We'll work up an agenda for them.
Yep. I believe when we met with Youth Council, they had stated that their retreat was going to be the twenty-seventh, and this shows the twenty-fifth.
That's what I was, yeah. You mean the, the summit?
The summit, yes.
Would it be the twenty-fourth, which is a Saturday?
When they'd said the twenty-seventh before, that was actual Memorial Day.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's on a Sunday? Okay, the twenty-fifth is a Sunday.
Yeah, originally. Your twenty-fifth is a Saturday, twenty-sixth is a Sunday in 2024.
Right. But they had originally told us the twenty-seventh. Yeah. Would have been actual Memorial Day. The holiday. Yeah.
Twenty-fifth. So maybe our first wild clerk can quickly send us out a little save the date on our calendar so we get it correct on that. Yep. There's, there's a lot of stuff, obviously, and she sent out a boatload of calendar items this last week, so more to follow. Very good. Anything else, Mr. Vargas, on that? You good?
Yeah. That, that includes the review of all the work plans here.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, for putting that together and reviewing it with us. You received our feedbacks. We'll get some tweaks before the final. Any other questions, comments, corrections for Mr. Vargas? Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
So now we'll move to the review of our liaisons to the Citizen Advisory Board Committees and Commissions. Now that we've reviewed the work plans, you can know which ones to stray away from. But this is mine for review and discussion. So what we typically do is we take a look, we've got a couple of, at least one new council member and Mr. Laura Sella, who's been here and already been appointed to several. So what I normally do is take a look, and if you're okay with where you're currently planted, I'd suggest we kind of keep it the same. But if you've got a heartburn for one and prefer to do something else, now is the time.
I want to make a correction.
Okay.
The, we put Treston on Landmarks and Heritage Advisory a while back. I'm, I'm written down there and that he, and he's
Should be.
He's, yeah, he's had that for a year plus.
Yeah. But, but currently you're on that, Landmarks. Ms. Schumacher, you see that? Okay, in lieu of Mr. Bokey. So, Mr. Bokey, you're still on the Planning Commission, even though I heard some grumbling at a few sessions last year? Are you still willing to stay on that with me? Okay. Well, you're on the Planning Commission, and we'll get to the other outside boards in a minute. So just, these are the internal ones. So we've got Mr. Brandstetter on Community Services, Mrs. Bell on Lakewood Arts, Ms. Moss on the Promise Advisory Board, Mr. Bokey, and, excuse me, Mr. Laura Sella on Landmarks Heritage Advisory Board. I'm on the one-day Lodging Tax Committee meeting. Parks is open. So there is an opportunity there for you, Mr. Pearson, for that. Okay. So we've got I think we can have an alternate on that, can we not? Ms. Schumacher on Parks and Rec Advisory Board, or we just have one? I think sometimes we have alternates, too.
I don't believe the code specifies that, so I think selecting an alternate would be appropriate.
Yep. So we can do that. Otherwise, we can have an arm wrestling match here, which would be humorous. So Planning Commission, Mr. Bokey, you still interested in doing that? Or you want to defer to another council member? What's your pleasure on that? Okay, so you're going to stay on planning. Public Safety Advisory Board, right now, Mr. Laura Sella, you're kind of primary on that. Is that some of your interest in staying on or deferring? Okay. Youth Council, we've got Ms. Bell and Mr. Laura Sella. It used to be Mr. Brandstetter, but Ms. Bell is on there, and Mr. Laura Sella, is that where you guys want to keep it? You could, you go to that? Okay. So those are the internal ones. Let's just double check. Okay, so right now it looks like we'll do Parks and Rec. Let's put Mr. Pearson as primary and Mr. Laura Sella as alternate on that. Mr. Brandstetter, did you have some burning desire other than Community Services Advisory Board?
Yeah. I, I would just note, Mr. Mayor, that we all sort of are on standby to be the alternates for all of these. You know, as, 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 as a liaison's schedule doesn't allow him to attend a meeting, you know, the, the, the city clerk is pretty good about finding someone amongst the rest of us to be able to go and do that. And so unlike some of the external ones of where an alternate has to be definitive
Very true.
They decided, I don't know that an alternates are essential to, to define. It's more in, informal, like, who's the first person we're going to ask? If, if someone can't make a meeting.
Very, very, very true. I was being kind to Mr. Laura Sella by giving him an advanced title as alternate.
Yeah, well, well, Mr. Laura Sella shares with me having a long name. And so putting his name on all of these documents looks like mine is, is a waste of ink.
Yeah. It is. We had to change the typeface and font, yeah. I, I think our clerk has what we need on this one, on the internals, correct? Okay, so now go to the next page on externals. And let's either confirm or change as we wish. So the Greater Tacoma Convention Center, it's a really very minor time commitment, as I understand it. So right now we've got Mr. Bokey as the alternate to Ms. Smith. Is that correct, Mr. Bokey? Okay. Opioid Abatement Council, we already heard today that Mr. Laura Sella is attending that. Mr. Brandstetter is the alternate. Is that correct? Good for you, too. The Regional Council, I'm on that with Mr. Bokey as the alternate. I don't have to be if someone has a burning desire to do that this year. But I've been doing it for a while. I know. Yes, exactly. Do you want to do the alternate on that? Are you okay with that, Mr. Bokey? Right, I would stay as primary, and one would change as alternate. I'm, I'm fine being the primary for now. Oh, I see. There are two, you're correct. There are two voting members, right. Why don't we put Mr. Pearson down as alternate then, unless you want to bail as one of the two voting members? Okay. We have the first equivocation of the evening. There will be many more. All right, so we'll move on to the next one, Pierce Transit. I think there, Madam Clerk, there's a mistake about the term of office there because when I talked to the Pierce Transit folks I think there, Madam Clerk, there's a mistake about the term of office there, because when I talked to the Pierce Transit folks. I think the appointment was for a period longer than 2020. It was, we probably should put the term of office on that, because it was through a couple of years from now.
Yes, my apologies. So the term is through December 31st, 2025 for Pierce Transit.
Yeah. And so that's already been taken care of, so I'll stay on that. Pierce Transit Public Benefit Area. I don't know. I don't think we have to do anything with that. Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly, that's all of us anyway, whoever can go. Mr. Branstad?
On the Puget Sound Regional Council, are we in a window where the city. Actually. Has one of us as a member of, of their executive committee? You know, that, that's something that changes from time to time, and it has not always been that Lakewood is entitled to a seat on that executive committee. Sometimes it's been over there and. So I'm not sure that, that we're in a, we're in a window of where we should appoint someone. Or that we are allowed to appoint someone to that executive committee.
It's my impression, and I could be incorrect. But it's my impression that the appointments to the Puget Sound Regional Council Committees, whether Executive, Transportation, or Operations. Are run through the Pierce County Regional Council. From all the representatives of all of the cities and towns to that body, then they solicit the folks to serve on that committee, but I could be wrong.
I believe in or around 2019, Lakewood was given one voting membership position that would be appointed. Based on this council's recommendation. That was a position served by Don Anderson.
The Executive Committee, is that right? That wasn't through a county position? Okay.
So we would be looking forward for a recommendation for this role, and then we would bring it forward for council action via next, at the next regular meeting.
Well, then that's up for grabs. If someone wants to serve on that. I have done the Economic Development District for the Puget Sound Regional Council in years past. And that was pre-COVID, where we had to physically schlep up to Seattle, which made for almost a full half day. It may be different now. Mr. Branstad?
Well, I would actually suggest to Mr. Pearson that. The work of this higher level organization aligns. Most closely with, with the work of our Planning Commission, in that he may be bringing a. Good frame of reference to what they're talking about. And, and, and if he, that's going to consider doing that, although the meetings are in Seattle, I believe.
But they may be, again, post-COVID. They're now, I think, eligible to be attended via Zoom, I believe.
Mayor, that is correct. Those meetings are both in person in Seattle as well as virtual attendance options.
A boatload of time, because it used to be hellish, to be honest.
I could do remote.
Right. Okay. So let's put Mr. Pearson down then for the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Committee slot for now. And then you can let us know how it goes, because we can always get an alternate for you or have somebody pitch it for you, but that would be great. Okay, South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership, I think that's set. You've got. Mr. Bokey as member and Mr. Branstad as alternate. I thought you were the primary, weren't you, Mr. Branstad, or no? Is it been you, Mr. Bokey? Okay. Okay, so the two of you are fine in that position? Very good. Deputy Mayor, am I missing anything you're interested in doing? Okay, just checking. Okay. South Sound 911 Policy Board, Mr. Branstad, are you still willing to serve?
Well, I just note that it's, the word policy has been taken off of the title of that position, because it's, it's, it's now just a board and it's not a, a, do that. You know, I'm, I'm finishing 12 years of, of doing that. So while I would, would continue to do it, I would also. Step aside for someone that wanted, was, was interested in working on something that sets regional.
There's an open door, my friends. Would you like to do it, Mr. Laura Sella?
Yeah, I'm open to.
Okay, are you okay with that, Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that need to, 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 you know, just, just make the notification to them that we're changing our representative.
Great. I think our clerk can do that. She can take care of it. Great.
I should align with the Public Safety Advisory.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's a good pitch there. Tacoma Tide Flat Subarea Plan Advisory Group. I can't imagine there's a whole lot going on in that anymore.
There hasn't been a whole lot going on in that for. A, a, a good while. It's gotten to be a pretty complicated thing, and there are a group of. Different, multiple groups of committees between the port and the city of Tacoma being able to go and do that. Every once in a while, they, it's rather than meetings, they send out something and say, do you have some comments on it? I think it's going to. Sunset in another year and willing to continue to be the recipient of their emails and send them responses.
Very good. So, and then turning to the next page, we've got our Lakewood Multicultural Coalition. Looks like council members. Councilmember Branstad and Deputy Mayor Moss, we should change the title there, Madam Clerk. I assume you're both willing to continue in that role? Very good. Lakewood Sister Cities Association, Mr. Branstad? Looks like you're on for that? Yeah, very good. Yeah, yeah. Sounds like it's close to empty. Okay, and then we've got the school district board meeting appearances. We've already got those slated. I think the clerk sent those dates out to all of our calendars. So you can make a note of that. Same for the community collaboration dates and the Lake City Neighborhood Association Meetings. The North Lakewood Association Meetings and Telkom Woodbrook Meetings. So. Those have all been set. Make a note, typically for our new members. If you can't make one of those meetings, just let one of us know so one of us can show up. Because the neighbors certainly like to see and, and hear from a council member at one of those meetings, each of those meetings. And there, it's a great way to network with the neighbors for sure, and to provide two-way communication that sometimes is. Not as robust as it could be throughout the rest of the year.
While we're on the topic of. Reaching out and asking someone else to cover, January 10th on the Lakewood Community Collaboration, I have a hearing in my day job, so I can't attend. But I would be happy to swap with someone else.
Sure. So January 10th.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bell, is that something you can flip with him for February 14? Yeah. Yeah.
Is it, that one's not in person, or is it?
They usually are in person here. You might be able to appear by Zoom. I, that would be, yeah.
When, when is it?
February 14th.
No, but you won't.
Oh, you can appear by Zoom?
But you're saying it's the 10th?
Typically, it's kind of a welcome. Two-minute opening to say hello and. To provide a little bit of feedback, maybe on questions that they may pose, but usually it's just kind of physically being there to answer any questions they may have.
Wednesday.
Tends to be a soup of organizations that are all sharing with each other.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's kind of a passive. I don't want to say passive, but it's kind of a passive role we play. We're there just to kind of have face.
If I can do a remote and be out by 10, I have a hearing at 10, so I just need to be on a different. At 10, so.
Correct. That meeting is available virtually on January 10.
Fine with that.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure. It said in the. American.
Yeah. No problem. So again, going through all the various dates that the clerk has set for all of us, I think we're good. So with those corrections and position changes and verbiage tweaks. Date tweaks, Madam Clerk, I think we're good on that. Okay? Okay, so the next item for tonight is the review of the third quarter 2023 financial report. And before we kind of get on that, why don't we just take a three or four minute stretch break so we can get Ms. Kraus down to get set up? And this will be the significant portion of tonight's agenda. So why don't we take a three-minute break? Okay, we are back from a brief recess and stretch break for our review of the third quarter financial report. And for this, we've got our Deputy City Manager, Talk Kraus.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. And I'm going to go page by page painfully.
Yeah, I got, I got a 12-ounce copy, so I'm good, yeah.
Okay, so the packet itself is probably over 140 pages, just trying to keep things transparent. And a lot of good information for City Council and City Manager. And so I'll just start on, well, on my page number, it's page two. So on the middle table, actually, I'll just start with page three, because that's the summary of the General and Street Fund. So for the General and Street Fund, just compared to 2023 year-to-date actuals, so in the far right corner. Compared to the year-to-date budget, revenues are up by 1.1 million or 3.1%. And expenditures are down by 325,000 or 1%. And just looking in the last column on the blue, the year-to-date actuals. We have ending fund balance of currently at the end of third quarter, 16,737,921.
Can I be caught up with you here?
Yeah, so we're maintaining our 12% reserves that the City Council established. And that's the 2% contingency reserves, the 5% general fund reserves, and the 5% strategic reserves.
Got it.
We still maintain the $2 million for the Economic Development Opportunity Fund until the City Council decides or gives us direction on how to spend it.
Right.
And then we have undesignated or reserved for the remaining biennial budget of $9.1 million.
Just to comment on that, my question, you know, I love the fact that we've got a set aside for the Economic Development Fund. We set a number. And one wonders if we shouldn't, down the road. Funds available, have a policy that increases that number, so it's not just static.
Yeah, that, that will be.
By a percent over time as the general fund maybe increases, maybe, right?
Yes. A city council can do that.
Yeah.
Just pending the, on the availability of funds, but yeah, it definitely, it doesn't have to stay at $2 million, whatever surplus, you could designate that it goes into that.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm just throwing it out there for later discussion, but.
Yeah, so overall, just looking again at that last column. Revenues are up, but expenditures are not, we're not saving as much. So the expenditures are getting really tight. And the good news on the sales, on the revenue side is we do have some revenue increases. So for example, on the sales tax, we're up by 550,000 compared to the year-to-date budget. But we are somewhat down on the 2022 compared to 2022 year-to-date. So based on City Council's policies and the way that we estimate revenues, that's a good thing for us here.
What can you tell us about the gambling tax, the reason why it's down 60%?
So we had one major casino, and it's in the details. It's the Great American Casino. They closed for remodeling at the end of June, and they just opened up in December. You'll see on the detail that the impact isn't quite as great, but there's been. but there's been a lot of shifting between the various casinos, so. And then the admissions tax is up by ninety-nine thousand dollars compared to the year-to-date, and a similar amount compared to twenty twenty-two. But I just wanted to highlight that included in the twenty twenty-three actuals is the catapult paid for their back taxes. They're on a payment plan, and they've been paying that. And then as council member Bokey noted, that it's probably Barbie that is creating the increase in the admissions tax.
Well, he went to it five times, I think.
Yeah, I'm I'm pretty sure, so I don't even have to go now. So that's the general fund. Let's see what else I can call out. Yeah, so basically, it's the gambling tax is, you know, we're not going to recover. It's because they opened up on December twenty-second.
Right.
So I'm expecting that with their remodel, hopefully, that the business increases. But then again, we might be seeing some shuffling between the different casinos.
What do we, what do we explain, or how do we explain the twenty percent dump in the parks and rec fees?
Well, overall, and I'm sorry, I I don't have a absolute answer for that one. But overall, just on the parks and recreation piece, they are meeting their target in terms of the cost recovery.
Eighty-five percent or whatever.
Eighty-five percent is for community and economic development. There's this forty-five percent.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or items you want me to cover on this page?
Anyone? Okay.
Okay. So looking at page four, our ending fund balance. In twenty twenty-two, the total ending fund balance was pretty high. It's dropped off a bit for the September twenty twenty-three. And you'll see that in the chart below. But then I also want to step back now, going back to page two, the table that I was going to refer to originally was the middle table where we have the annual operating revenues and expenditures. So you'll see in twenty twenty-three, the operating revenues and the operating expenditures are pretty close. But when you get into the actuals from the previous years, you'll see a wider, a wider gap. So our revenues typically have come in greater than the expenditures. But for budgetary purposes, we will always have revenues either meeting or exceeding the operating expenditures.
That's the goal.
That is the goal, yes, and that's based on city council's policies, so. Okay, so on page five is the property tax, and I'm going, you know, taking a longer time because I know that we do have a new council member, so.
Sure.
So on the property tax, you know, we're eligible for the one percent increase, and that's what the city council has been doing since about two thousand and six. So we're going to be receiving what we had estimated. And if we receive more, it's going to be because the delinquent taxes got paid. On page five, so we have a lot of information on sales tax, a lot. So the sales tax here compared to the twenty twenty-two year-to-date, we're down by two hundred and fifty-six thousand. But due to the estimating, according to the revenue policies, we're actually up by five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. I'm going to skip over page seven because this was really about the Marketplace Fairness Act. When A W C gave us some information and just tracking against that. We have some history on the next page on the sales and use tax by sector. And really, this is just kind of informational so that you can see where the taxes have increased or decreased. And then on page nine is taking a look at the sales and use tax by sector and explaining where those variances are. So on the retail side, retail compared for twenty twenty-three is down by seventy-three thousand dollars. And you'll see a good portion of that is on the motor vehicle parts. And dealers is down by sixty-three thousand dollars. And then we have some areas that increase that offset the other areas. On the services side, up by ninety-eight thousand dollars, and fifty thousand of that is from the restaurants. And then on the construction is the next area. That's down by four hundred and forty-three thousand, and just construction of buildings is a huge contributor of that, so. And then I'll skip over to page twelve. So we were tracking these by the different areas as they were established originally for this financial report. But this table here just shows the areas that have increased or decreased. So like on the Bridgeport Way, for example, that stayed relatively the same. On the Bridgeport North, that increased. Bridgeport South decreased. And then we just show the different areas where there are some decreases.
Mr. Brandsetter, yes?
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Crowe, you know, this sales tax by area pie chart, okay? And 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 it has all other is fifty-seven point something, and then we have all these other little things to do that. It would seem that, you know, where we've we've got areas that are as low as less than one percent, get their own little slice of pie. Isn't there? Aren't there some elements in that all other that are deserving to be an independent slice? Or that would be it would be informative to us if we could to to look at that? I mean, that sort of, I mean, are are all these home businesses or 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 is it all in? I mean, if we could, even if we could just separate the and and see in here how much of the sales tax by area and that in the in the cyber area, how much is 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 actually internet? Things to do that. It having fifty-seven percent of the pie just be other with all these other little things over there is less informative than maybe we could have to be starting next year when we look at it.
So to be honest with you, there could be some improvements to this table. But I will tell you, it was a lot of work to even develop this one. So basically, what we had to do is take a look at the map, identify the different parcels in those areas, working with G I S, extracting addresses from the sales tax database, matching the addresses back to the businesses. And so, yes, ideally, it would be good to update this table and maybe focus on the different areas that we've been focusing on in terms of economic development, identifying the town center, pulling all of those and really elaborating on that. In terms of isolating pretty much the internet sales, sales tax, there is one table here that is on page seven, which is the Marketplace Fairness Act, which is a lot of the internet sales that is captured in this number from a couple of.
I I I would just think that for me, and Mr. Mayor, is that I like being able to see what percentage is coming from the central business district and the international district and the and and how much of it is transit oriented. But all the other small slices, I don't know that they're communicating anything to me. And if it's a great deal of work to try to figure them all out, I would just as soon just maybe not have a pie chart, but but look at the any, anything that's over five percent, I like that. And then everything else is there if that would make things easier next year for the twenty twenty-four updates.
So as always, we'll look to improving the report and update areas that we can do, so.
The one thing it would be interesting, probably not something you can necessarily do. But in light of that, it would be interesting to know what the data reflects, but also what the capacity could be, right? How we dovetail that with economic development incentives and how we, you know, we have a buildable lands report. Why don't we have a buildable economic base report in a sense? Or what the economic stratosphere could be if we motivated, incentivized, did something to to grow the the business? Might be interesting to look at.
It would be very interesting.
Yeah, and if we had economic targets.
Yeah.
As a policy. And and how do we measure where we are vis-à-vis those targets in a given year for economic development to see how that pie chart might change? That might be an interesting thing for us to look at. Where are we falling short? Is it because we don't have the capacity in the in the land area? In the in the commercial building or buildability of certain areas? You know, are we not incentivizing BIPOC businesses in certain areas more than we should be? You know, those kinds of things, it'd be interesting to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
My thoughts anyway, home businesses, it'd be interesting to see where that stacks up, home-based businesses, yeah.
Okay, so just as we talked about sales tax increasing. So other areas that are related to sales tax would be the criminal justice sales tax. We're also seeing the same in the park sales tax. So on page thirteen, criminal justice sales tax increased by about seventy-one thousand dollars compared to the budget. And but we're slightly down from where we were in twenty twenty-two. And utility tax on page fourteen, we're seeing increases of two hundred and seventy-three thousand compared to the budget and one hundred and sixty-one thousand compared to where we were last year. An area that continues to decrease is on the cable, and that is both compared to last year as well as with the budget. So we're seeing that the energy, electricity, and the natural gas is both up. So gambling tax on page fifteen, this is where you'll see Great American Casino is down by one hundred and thirty-two thousand. We're seeing that Chips Casino is also down and Macau Casino, so everybody is pretty much down. The Great American Casino. On page sixteen, we've already covered is the admissions tax. Both compared to twenty twenty-two and twenty-three are just under a hundred thousand dollar increase.
Which is great to see because COVID kicked in the booty for a while.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is nice.
Yeah, so we're slowly picking back up. Franchise and non-compete fees, we budgeted about four point six million dollars to take into account some of those increases. And right now, compared to budget, we're slightly under by about eight thousand dollars. But overall, compared to twenty twenty-two, we're up by one hundred and fourteen thousand. State shared revenues, state shared revenues are deposited primarily in the general fund, but there's also a portion that goes into the street fund as well as capital projects. And those are some of the requirements for getting that in that money. So on the general and street fund compared to twenty twenty-two, we're down by seventy-one thousand dollars. And you can see the breakout that is in the high crime is down by seventy-six thousand. And then on the other fuel tax, you'll see for the capital projects, which is where they're funding, it is down by thirty-five hundred dollars compared to last year.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, on page nineteen, this is information on our cameras for the red light and the school zone infractions. I've got three years presented here. We get the gross revenue, and then we get the vendors get their share of it. And then the third column is the net revenue. So in twenty twenty-three, for the first three quarters, gross revenue was seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. We paid the vendor about two hundred and ninety thousand, and the net revenue is four hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we'll continue to see similar here, except we don't have one of the cameras because it was under construction, and we didn't, we're going to go with the new vendor. So we didn't put those cameras back up. But we'll see, we are expecting to see some differences in twenty twenty-four with the new vendor and the cameras. On page twenty-one is the jail services. So jail services, if you recall back in the previous general and street fund summary, you'll see that some of the departments have exceeded their budget. Police is one of them, and that is partially due to jail. So for jail, we have about six hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the operating. So just the ongoing portion of it, because that's what we had seen in previous years. There wasn't a lot of activity and the rates. But then with the new Niskuale jail rates, that increased quite substantially. And in twenty twenty-three, when we add the one-time budget with the ongoing budget, we are pretty close to meeting that for the first nine months.
In twenty twenty-three August, we paid Niskuale two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and forty. So that's catch up on?
Yes, that is catch up from.
The new contract.
Yeah, they billed us all that once from July twenty twenty-two through December twenty twenty-two.
So if we adjusted if we adjusted the amounts to, we took that two forty and put a real number there for what it should have been, the the net, the total there of seven sixty-three, eight, three forty-three, which is already more than all of last year. Be closer to what, six hundred?
I'm sorry, I wasn't tracking. I was looking at the September one because it includes the back payments. If we backed out the back payments, we get to about fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, so it would have been fifty thou, seven thousand, but up from twenty-five the prior year.
Yes.
I I just bring this up, this is one number that really jumped out at me. Then when we start, I mean, I think we're going to have a very serious discussion about mandatory minimums, but we, you you know, we won't live long if this thing is doubling or, you you know, this is, that that is a whale of an increase.
The jail services, yeah.
I mean, if we're going to start paying, I don't know, this has got to be higher than it's ever been before, right?
It doesn't work if they're not paying fines or forfeitures, you know, it is decrease, and it's kind of like this increased expenses, decreased revenue.
Yes.
Ads for not a fun time.
Right.
Okay, well, then I think, yeah, so dispatch services, those are just based on the assessments. We're paying those on a monthly basis. Animal licenses are down slightly compared to where we were last year. We're down about forty-five hundred dollars, but it's not as huge of a revenue source. Page twenty-four, the alarm permits were up by twenty thousand dollars compared to where we were, but down by about five thousand dollars compared to twenty twenty-two. The next page on page twenty-five really is just to be transparent about the seizure funds and what they can be used for and what the balances available. So we have Fund One eighty, which is narcotics. We have the felony seizure, and page twenty-six is the federal seizure. So we have money in all of them, our federal seizure, not as much. On page twenty-seven is again to be transparent about what we have in our public safety funds. If you recall back ten years ago, we didn't really have a good accounting of this. And so just to be transparent and kind of more of an accounting. Municipal court, as the mayor mentioned, the fines and forfeitures are down. So compared, and we've already taken down the revenues. So in twenty twenty-one, we're at five hundred and forty-six thousand, twenty twenty-two, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Budget's three hundred and forty-six thousand. And, you know, through the first nine months, we're at one hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is ninety thousand less than what was budgeted, and about thirty-six thousand dollars less than where we were in twenty twenty-two. So yes, fines are going down and jail costs are going up as the mayor mentioned.
I'm just trying to get my head around that. So fines go down, jail costs going up. So in other words, we're incarcerating or at least arresting and sending for a first. And sending for a first appearance or an arraignment in Niskwali. So that cost is what it is going up. But then when they come to court for sentencing or whatever. We're not seeing.
There's also that ability to pay RCW.
Right, that's what's kicking us a little bit too, yeah, okay. Really?
As as a lawyer, you'll probably find that amazing.
I do, yeah. Are less than transparent, you're saying?
Okay.
Right.
On page twenty nine, I added a couple of charts so that you could see what the infractions and hearings um look like. Or infractions for the uh and criminal looks like, but you can see that there's been quite a bit of a drop. And um just a slight pickup in twenty twenty three for the infractions. And then a lot more information when you take into consideration of the other courts that we provide services for. Um DuPont and Stilicon.
Just one last question on that issue Mr. Bokey raised. So based on the statute where someone can say that they can't afford it, I I get that. Is there any sort of validation? Exercise that they have to go through with court staff to? Prove it?
My understanding is yes.
Okay.
Um on page thirty three, as I mentioned, just more information, you'll see on page thirty three that in two thousand and fifteen, revenues were one point one million dollars. Um on a year to date and in twenty twenty three, it's a hundred and ninety four thousand. Page thirty three. Um business licenses, revenues are picking up, we're up by ninety three hundred dollars. Um the amount has been relatively similar, about two hundred and eighty five thousand annual collections. The city tree fund on page thirty five, we currently have four hundred and seventy four thousand dollars. And there is some, the, this money was intended for um during the budget. Study sessions and such that it would be for the urban forestry program, but there are some other authorized uses as well in accordance with the code. So they could be for tree replacements at Fort Stilicon Park. Page thirty six and actually the next several pages relate to development services. Development services including not just what's in community and economic development, but also the work that is done in the public works engineering side. Um, uh it takes you then, once we do the calculation, on page forty two, the cost recovery is um adopted at eighty five percent. And where we are currently, so the the goal is eighty five percent, you'll see that the annual budget here is seventy six percent and the actual. Is at ninety three percent, taking a look at two thousand and eighteen to twenty twenty two, the actual target is ninety or the actual recovery is ninety eight percent. Um page forty three is the property abatement, we currently have.
Hold on, here, Mr. Pierce, you had a question. Yep.
So the development services permit fees, so we have on. Back earlier, I think like s- page seven or eight or something, talked about the um construction taxes and how those are are down, but we're seeing. Um permit activity i- is up and so, you know, what's what's the relation between those two and? And. You know, usually you expect to see those kind of going on a similar trajectory.
Sure, so on the construction sales tax, we are seeing it down. And there are, there were some projects that were bigger in size and generated some sales tax on the um. W- we just don't have as many big projects. On the development services side, yes, there should be a some type of correlation, so typically when development is up. That would also increase like the real estate excise tax and there's actually probably a closer. Um relationship between real estate excise tax and the sales tax than there would be for the development services. But what we can expect moving in the future, which we haven't budgeted for, is um, you know, the permit fees as it relates to Western State Hospital. And then there's a couple of multifamily units, I think it's the affordable housing ones for Devco and Alliance. That we will see in the future, some um. Sales tax associated with that and it it should be a sizable amount.
Thank you.
So um property abatement, there's only three of them that we have leans on that we haven't received payment for. And the biggest one is the Dirk Mayberry, so for the twenty twenty two. We're looking at about twenty five, year twenty five, twenty six, um assuming if they went into foreclosure, then we would collect that if they didn't pay it. So that's the status on um Dirk Mayberry and actually the other two as well. And the next, yeah.
Just a sec, so looking at the ending fund balance there on that, it looks like we're. At a negative one fifty one roughly?
Yes, it's a negative hundred and fifty one, but within the fund, we have rental housing safety program as well as um fourteen oh six funds. So there's two aspects to this, on a fund level, we're okay from a legal standpoint. On the property abatement ones, we may have to look at other um pots of money such as, you know, NSP or so. That we could use that money to cover some of these shortfall until we get the money. So there may be some juggling of money.
We wouldn't wanna slow down the program if we can avoid that.
I think it's a high priority for the city council, so we, yeah.
Okay.
So just, just for everybody's edification. The statutory rate on the outstanding payments on the abatement leads, is it still one percent a month?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this represents the principal or does this represent the principal?
Um, I have more information here. For the twenty twenty two, we don't have the interest calculated in it because that, yeah.
Okay, okay, so yeah, just so you know, so we, it's treated like property tax.
Yeah, one percent penalty is not that much, huh?
A month, though.
Oh, a month, yeah, so twelve percent, yeah.
Is that the statutory rates?
Yes.
It adds up.
Yeah.
Yeah, over three years.
Mr. Branson, yep.
Mr. Bokey has managed to confuse me, I think so, so let me just, when I look at this page, we see a, an ending fund balance in. Twenty twenty three of a negative a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the abatement portion of of this of this fund. Um, but that the chart below it is essentially. A recap of some. Accounts payable the, into that fund, so if I were to. Look at that of the, the accounts payable offsetting the negative fund balance, then we're healthier than. Hmm, then just looking at the ending fund balance itself, is that right?
Yeah, so on here, if you're adding back in, so we have a negative a hundred and fifty thousand, if we got the six hundred and fifty five thousand, we're sitting in a pretty healthy. You know, for other types of abatements, um but we'll need to take a look at it at year end just to. Determine how to make up that balance, whether some of those abatements can be charged to other funds, eligible funds. Or even the potential of doing some type of interfund loan until we get this money.
Right, okay, and eh. Yeah, I'll defer that question, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now I'm at rental housing safety program on page forty nine. So the rental housing safety program, the fees, registration fees were anticipated at two hundred thousand dollars. And through September, they came in at a hundred and forty five thousand dollars, so the ending fund balance is just. Under by a thousand dollars and um same situation, we'll be evaluating this at year end. I am anticipating that overall, unless we see some huge abatement um bills, we should be okay from a legal standpoint. And then page fifty one, what's saving us is really the balances in the affordable housing program through third quarter. Um, the next section, page fifty two, and it goes on for quite some time and really this is because CDBG has been so complicated. We're just disclosed everything, what loans are outstanding, what those programs are all about. And then we get into page one ninety two, which is.
One ninety two?
Yes, which I just skipped over all of the CDBG loan details and such.
Wow.
On page sixty six is the South Sound Military Communities Partnership, again being transparent, showing um the amounts. I'm sorry, I'm using my page numbers, which is probably, yeah. Uh, so just disclosing what our interfund loans are and this is has to do with the tactical tailor, eventually that will get paid off. And then pages sixty seven through. And this is also another long section, page sixty seven through seventy seven is about the ARPA. Um program and again, just providing transparency. As I mentioned on page seventy eight, the park sales tax um is also seeing increase compared to budget, however slightly down and very similar to what we see. Criminal justice sales tax as well as our regular sales tax. From a cost recovery standpoint, on page seventy nine, the target um is forty five percent. It happens to be that on the annual budget, it is forty nine percent, but we came in at forty five percent. Um, just on here, you can see like on the recreation, so some of the, one of the questions is what's brought down the recreation revenues. So this is broken out by recreation, senior services, parks facilities and Fort Stilicon Park, which is all within the general fund. The year to date of, for recreation revenues is two hundred and sixty nine thousand compared to three hundred and seventeen thousand um. On an annual basis, so it's not an exact, but you can see where some of this is, so recreation is recovering. At sixty percent, senior services is recovering forty nine percent, parks facilities forty three percent, so all of them are very close. In terms of recovery, I'll have that better explained for the fourth quarter report. And page eighty is the farmer's market, just sharing information on what the program costs are and um some of the estimates or. For attendance and such. Page eighty one is to provide information on um the human services program. And then we get into other parks related um programs or what Parks Department manages. On page eighty two, we have the property management fund, which is an internal service fund. And here again is just to disclose, there's a lot of uh capital and one time programs, about one point three million dollars. Of which sixty seven thousand has been spent, so um we are working on the pre-budget. And one of the pre-budget items is the internal service funds, including the plan for capital and maintenance and such. So we'll take this into consideration as we move forward for the next biennial budget. And um, Park CIP transparency, page eighty three. Um, page eighty four, real estate excise tax, this is another area that we were not expecting, we've seen really healthy. Real estate excise tax um come in for a number of years and we're seeing that slow down. So I'm anticipating by the end of the year, we will feel the impact of um that. So again, we'll be strategizing, figuring out where we have excess monies, what programs can be funded um using other funds. And potentially if there's just any savings within capital projects, that doesn't require us to transfer any of the real estate excise tax or a lesser amount. And then on page ninety is the transportation benefit district, again, we've seen really healthy amounts, we maintain the eight hundred and thirty five thousand budget. And by the end of the year, we're going to see that um there's going to be a shortfall of about twenty thousand dollars. The good news is um, you know, really taking a look at the TBD bond funded um. Bonds, the city council approved eleven point six million dollars, those bonds probably won't be issued until um. End of Q one, so we'll have some savings that, so the shortfall will. Be offset by differing the uh bond issuance. Okay, and then pages ninety four and ninety five, this is the transportation CIP and the sewer CIP being transparent. Same with um the surface water management operations. On page ninety seven, as the mayor mentioned, lodging tax has been really healthy um and at one, I think at one point in time, it's like four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars. And now we've more than doubled that. Um, and then just more information on page ninety eight. Page ninety nine is our fleet and equipment fund, which is an internal service as well as the following page five oh three, which is our information technology. Just showing you in more detail of what that fund does, since it's kind of more in the backend, but just to be transparent. Five oh four is the risk management fund and um. We did get our assessment and it's gonna come in for twenty twenty four, probably about a hundred thousand dollars more than we had anticipated. So you'll see that coming up. On page hundred and two, just full disclosure on our debt service and the funding source, how we're paying for it. And then cash and investments, um just, you know, where we are in ending fund balance for all funds is sixty two million dollars. And um page one oh five and going through is if you wanna look at more detail. Um on the specific funds, that's there. Page one twenty four is the building permit activity report. And then we've included information on the My Lakewood three one one and by the different categories. Um just to show the types of requests that we get and what we're doing. And then lastly, we have the um performance measures.
Lastly is the what?
A performance measures by department.
Looking at the My Lakewood room, one thing from in here.
So that concludes my presentation.
Digesting and then we'll ask one question.
Oh, but I do also wanna tell you the things that we have coming up because you said something about strategizing, so we are. Um, looking at the, I mentioned that we're starting the pre-budget work um as soon as, you know, starting this month. Um, I'll be working on the financing options, we're also including the financing options for the funds fourteen oh six affordable housing.
Right.
And then potentially taking a look at what other types of um options we have, you know, allowing for cannabis. Uh businesses, for example, what that could possibly generate and really this is just to pull out every possibility. Um, it was presented to the city council back in twenty twenty one, but just updating because things have changed since then. The city council can expect a six year financial forecast update uh in advance of going into the budget and that is scheduled for the end of February. Um, we have started and you've heard from the city manager probably in your um one on one meetings, but the work on the capital projects funds. So really just a continuation from where we left off um with the six year plan and then just adjusting for any changes. And then you'll hear the twenty twenty three year end financial report in conjunction with the carry forward budget adjustment in about, I think it's April timeframe. So. Yeah, that's, that's my. Report.
Well, it's a very good report, thank you, very, very thorough and very solid. And I'm sure it takes all hands on deck and the finance department to put this together.
It's a fun report, let's just say.
Yes, I'm sure it is, necessary but fun. Any questions or Mr. Kraus? Just have a final overview. Very thorough, um, as I think we all recognize the. Potential for revenues to. Get thin as expenses continue to increase with the cost of inflation, because I don't see revenues increasing. At three to four percent annually on the sales tax necessarily.
I think maybe as we get out further, but in the near future, it's gonna be a little bit tighter.
A little tighter, yeah, yeah, for sure.
So we, you know, we've received direction from the city manager for us to start taking a look at what it is that we're doing and things that we could. Potentially not do so that we can focus on the other areas, so just kind of shifting our resources around to still um achieve the city council goals.
Very good. Very good.
Yeah, so.
Any questions? Well, thank you again. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please thank your staff for their good work as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Detail. Okay, well, that concludes the three major items we had for discussion during the study session today. You can see on your agenda, the item scheduled for the next meeting on January sixteen, including a business showcase, presentation of Larry Saunders Service Award, uh approving the public art policy and approving what we've reviewed tonight by way of the Citizen Advisory Board Committees and Commissioned Work Plans. So with that, I will now turn to Mr. Coffield for his report.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, a few updates for you. Uh, the first is, uh, you know, it's been a winter storm that's been brewing primarily up in the mountains with all the snow and everything in the passes. And uh the latest forecasts are predicting perhaps um some of that cold weather and maybe even snow and ice is gonna make it down into our area. Just wanted to let you know that our M and O crews are standing by and ready. Uh, first and foremost, with our de-icers uh to get out there in the case things get a little glazed over early in the morning when the temperatures are at their lowest. So uh just again, just wanted to let you know, we are um standing by. We're also working on some communication outreach, letting people know what they can do, you know, to help prepare for um, you know, an emergency, a winter emergency, whether it's ice or snow or cold weather or anything like that, um as well as uh power outages. And, you know, we're serviced by three electrical utilities and they all do a good job of making that information available. Their outage maps that they have on their website. So uh just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Um, this next item, this is just for situational awareness. Uh, we received a uh a call this morning that apparently Pierce County, uh Pierce County Human Services was uh uh ha- has an idea of using parts of Western State Hospital, their campus for a temporary uh homeless encampment. Um, our reaction to that is no. Uh, there's a number of things to keep in mind here. Um, first, it's um not the city's land, it's D S H S, so it belongs to the state. So that would require um some significant work there. Uh, secondly, the employee union out at Western State Hospital probably would not be supportive of this just given their various safety issues that they're dealing with right now. So that's something that we hear on a, on a regular basis. Um, particularly with our community policing program partnership that we have with Western State in terms of them dealing with their patients in both the forensics and the civil commitment units. Um, third, uh, it would require an approval, excuse me, by the, by the city. Because it would require an amendment to the uh Western State Hospital Master Facility Plan, which would have to go through a very comprehensive public process to include going to the he- uh hearing examiner for consideration and review as, as well. Um, also, um, that is a very active and large construction site. I know the area looks very, very large, but uh there's a lot of activity that's about to kick off there with the construction of a number of uh new, new, new facilities. Um, also, there's um a child treatment center and a um group home for children that are operated out there. And so you kind of get a lot of moving parts and uh we just don't think that this is a very, very good idea. So just again, for situational awareness, just wanted to make you aware of it in case you hear of any scuttlebutt or anything along those lines. And so our next step is to reach out to D S H S to kind of just put a kibosh on this and move on, move on from there. So just wanted to give you a heads up. Um, also, uh, y- y- you know, the city just wanted to recognize our uh human resources team. So we uh recently received a check for almost fifty thousand dollars for our participation in um A W C's retro program, which is focused on injury prevention and a safety program. This is the fifth year in a row that we've gotten a rebate for um the amount of money that we pay to Al and I. It actually um relates to two thousand twenty, there's a lag in the timing of that. So for five years in a row, uh, we've been doing that. So just uh again, just wanted to celebrate that and the work of our H R department and our department directors. Um, the tax increment financing, I know the city council was briefed on that earlier this year and you provided us direction to move forward. Uh, we did submit the um application to the state treasurer uh last week, or maybe the week before, recently. And um the state treasurer now has ninety days to review that and get back with us to see if it's complying with what the state law is and things along those lines. Meanwhile, on a parallel track, again, as the council has been briefed, we are now going to be reaching out to the junior taxing districts to give them a courtesy heads up, again pursuant to Washington state law, about what this will entail and the potential impacts. So um and then uh the, the next steps after that is that this is gonna come back for, to the city council, hopefully with a, with, with, with a draft ordinance for your review and ultimately consideration to actually create uh the tax increment financing district. Um, want to give you a couple of updates on, on Waste Connections, um, you know, our LeMay, it's kind of known around here, but it is Waste Connections, a very, very large publicly traded uh corporation. Um, actually, uh, they do very well. Uh, we checked their uh financial statements on a quarterly basis, uh, cause um it's a publicly traded company and overall, they're doing extremely well. Just wanted to pass that on. Um, but they sent us an annual letter just notifying us pursuant to our franchise agreement of upcoming rate adjustments. And uh, and to, uh, and they'll go into effect on March first. And uh, the first is it has to do with the landfill rate or the tipping fee that Pierce County, um, Pierce County Council oversees and sets, and that's two point one one percent. And then they also get a C P I adjustment and this year, um, given C P I is pretty significantly higher than previous years, is at five point four percent. So we have, uh, again, that's allowed under the franchise agreement. Um, they also asked for a carbon, uh, carbon fee surcharge of point two nine percent. Um, we did deny that and the reason being is because it's not allowed in the franchise agreement. They can ask, and this is also consistent with past policy where the um, the, the franchisee can come to the city and has asked for uh, uh, fuel surcharges, has asked for recycling surcharges and things along those lines. And our message to them is quite frankly, again, I want to go back to my previous comment. We pull out their financial reports and they're doing very, very well. Uh, matter of fact, one of the things I point out is, you know, Waste Connections continues to distribute double-digit uh dividends to their investors. And so if they're having a cash flow problem as it relates to surcharges, perhaps that's something that they could take a closer look at. Cause again, their investors are doing very, very well based on the money that's being collected, not just in Lakewood, but within their whole service area, uh, both in the United States and internationally as, as, as well. Um, and then um, uh, last week, uh, they reached out to us and they mentioned this to us, that this was potentially coming when we met with them back in late November, early December, that um they are looking at uh changing their routes. So right now, they are in town about uh four days a week and they want to kind of consolidate for efficiencies to being in town uh three days a week. And again, this is something that's allowed under the franchise. We have to review it. We have twenty-one days to review it. Um, and so we're in the process of doing that right now. And then um if we, if we're, if it, if it's okay, and actually I'll tell you right now, based on what we're seeing, we don't see any issues or any violations of the franchise agreement or anything along those lines. Uh, they would then have fourteen days to notify all of the customers. Long story short, has an impact to about fifteen thousand of their customers in, in Lakewood. So basically, everybody's gonna be moving. Um, and it looks like um they're, they'll be doing away with their Tuesday collection and folks will be moving either to Monday, Wednesday or Thursday and kind of shifting around based on logistically and situationally where different neighborhoods are. And again, it's a focus so that they can be more responsive to collections on those days, as well as following up on missed collections or things, things along those lines. And again, just want to give you a courtesy heads up. Um, as far as, you know, the community outreach and the changes, that would be on them. You know, our job as a regulator is just to make sure that it is consistent with the franchise fee. So again, just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Mr. Pearson.
Question on that, uh, is i- in the franchise agreement or, or city code, maybe, I don't know. Are there limits on when trash collection can happen as far as time of day restrictions and stuff?
I believe there are, councilmember, and that's outlined in the franchise agreement.
Okay, so make sure we're not shimming down days and they're coming pick up at four in the morning or something.
That, that, that's correct. That's correct, councilmember.
I think they're doing that in your neighborhood before in the morning. Yeah.
Um, and uh, just a friendly reminder as it relates to your calendar. So um next Monday is a holiday. It's uh Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. And so your next regular meeting will be on Tuesday. And we would ask that you be here, you know, maybe a little after six P M. We want to do council pictures. We want to do a group photo for two thousand twenty-four. And then if you are so inclined, we can do an individual photo. If you would uh want to, want, want a new one or need one uh to begin with, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that. And then a week from Saturday is um the City of Lakewood's Welcome Walk and Meet Your Neighbors at Fort Stillicum Park. That'll be from eleven A M to two P M. Um, and then the following week, the last week of January, we're looking at having some meetings with um your state legislators on um Thursday, January twenty-fifth, down in Olympia at the state Capitol to follow up with your um key state legislative priorities. So more to, more to follow on that. And then also that evening, the twenty-fifth and into Friday, the twenty-sixth, uh, Pierce County will be again facilitating their annual homeless um point in time count or their pit. Um, and if you have an interest in getting out there and doing the count, um, I did provide a link to the website where you can go and you can sign up and they'll tell you where you can uh show up to uh be able to do that. And um you'll be assigned somewhere within, within the county uh to do that. Uh, February third, um, Caring for Kids is happy, having their annual Happy Hearts Dinner Auction. If you have an interest in tending, please let me know. I am pulling together a city table. And uh, and then the following week, uh, City Action Days, um, A W C, February seventh and eighth. Um, actually, it'll be down at Saint Martin's University in Lacey this year because they had some issues with their regular hotel that they've been using for a number of years, understanding they had a change in ownership or something along those lines. Um, also looking further out into February into March, just wanted to bring to your attention, Boys and Girls Club is having their annual uh Legacy of Hope event. Uh, that's on February twenty-second. I believe that's a Thursday. And there is a, uh, one of the finalists is from the Lakewood Club as, as, as always. And um, and, and, and then in March, Habitat for Humanity is having their Changes Lives Luncheon, uh, also um in downtown Tacoma. And uh, and then on March fifteenth, um, L M C C is hosting its second annual Dr. Claudia Thomas Community Services Award Gala, um, event at the McGavick Center. And uh, then on March twentieth, um, the Tacoma Pierce County Economic Development Board will be hosting um their annual um meeting also um in downtown Tacoma at the, at the Trade Center, Convention and Trade Center. And so we'll be looking at, again, the city sponsoring a table on that, a tabletop usually of ten. Um, so um, I know I'm missing one. There's an event. They're right across the street. You provide funding through them, community, um, forgive me. Uh, they, they have an annual laughter event. It's actually a pretty fun event. It's a luncheon event.
Community health. Uh, it's community health that is laughter.
Community healthcare, is that what?
I think it is.
Yes, and uh, they always put it, that's a, that's a, that's a pretty cool event, as a matter of fact, and that's a luncheon event. I don't have the date on your calendar, but um it's usually in March if I, if I recall. So um, so that's, just wanted to point that out.
Great.
So, so with that, that's my report.
Very good. Any questions from Mr. Coffield? And Ms. Schumacher is great about sending out the various dates. So if you missed it from his presentation, she'll send you the onslaught of uh musical dings to your calendar, so. Okay, let's go to council comments briefly. Councilmember Bell. So I don't forget you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't have too much to say. I was able to uh zoom in to the Arts Commission meeting tonight, like I had mentioned earlier, and they're making great progress on public art and bringing all the beauty to the city. So that's about it for me.
Councilmember Pearson.
Went to the um Thornwood Castle on Friday and had the uh pleasure of meeting with our military folks. Um, two-two striker brigade, so that was the first time I've been there. And um it was great to be able to showcase our city at a lovely old building. Um, lots of history there and so I think that the folks were pretty impressed and I, as was I. So uh that was a, that was a great event.
Well, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Bransdeter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, uh, this week I'll attend the uh neighborhood meetings in Tillicum and in Lake City. And I also plan on uh Thursday to attend the uh Commanding General's Reception on a Thursday afternoon.
I think that was canceled, Mr. Bransdeter. I think I received a notice, the Commanding General's Reception.
I, I didn't see a cancellation.
It is my understanding that that event for the eleventh is canceled.
Ah, okay, get some of my life back.
Wanted to save you a trip. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, not much for me tonight either, other than I also really enjoyed the reception with the, the two-two striker folks. Uh, it was a great opportunity to meet the, the team that, that does all that hard and important work uh and connect with the, with them and our other city council folks. And really just understand what they do, what's important to them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bokey.
Went to the uh school board meeting tonight, just said a, a few little things and got a shape meeting on uh Friday morning, so.
Very good. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do enjoy the two-two striker brigade celebration. It was nice to reconnect with some of the people that had been there before, so. I like the opportunity to connect with that military people, cause they are part of our city.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and I, I too, just extend appreciation to uh Ms. Schumacher and Mr. Coffield for putting that event together. It's, it's a welcomed event certainly by the two-two members and their spouses, and it's just really well done. Our, I'm sure we send a thank you card to the owner at Thornwood to extend our appreciation for the the hospitality and I'd be happy to sign that, something like that, if we can do that, that would be great. Um, other than that, lots of good events coming up. Mr. Coffield kind of outlined many of them. This is the season for all these organizations uh to receive and review their annual philanthropy, if you will. And we get the opportunity to attend many of the events, including, I think there are a couple of um A P C C events, Asia Pacific Cultural Center events that I've been asked to come speak at and attend. And more to follow on that as we get closer to the events. So thanks again to staff for good presentations tonight during the study session. So now we will recess into executive session for approximately thirty minutes pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one ten sub one, sub I, to discuss a legal counsel litigation or potential litigation. The council is not expected to take action following the executive session other than to formally adjourn the meeting. So at this time, in the absence of any other council comments for the good of the order, we will recess into exec- So at this time, in the absence of any other council comments for the good of the order, we will recess into executive. So at this time, in the absence of any other council comments for the good of the order, we will recess into executive.